All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver, and it's my pleasure to welcome you here all this evening for the public hearing for 1149 to 1155 Lynn Valley Road. I've got a bit of a script. Public hearings are a quasi judicial setting, and so I have a bit of a script to follow to inform the room in just a moment. I did just want to say, it's not entirely covered in the script, but we conduct these meetings in a hybrid fashion where members of the public staff and council can participate virtually or in person, and Councillor Murray is joining us virtually tonight, so you have all seven members of council present for this public hearing. So a bit of a script to go through here. It'll just take me a couple of minutes. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act and is being held in a hybrid meeting format, meaning there is a combination of in-person electronic participation by some or all members of council staff and the public. The chair has established the following rules for this hearing. Following the staff and applicant presentations, we will go through the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the chair may call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address council for a first time. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaws under consideration this evening. If you've provided a written submission, there's no need to read it, as it will have been already seen by the council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaws under consideration at this hearing. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Council wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes about public hearings. Council is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaw. Council may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaws which council has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available at the table next to the door and online at dmv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing, or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So at this time, I'll call on the clerk to introduce the bylaws.
Thank you, through your worship. District of North Vancouver Official Community Plan Bylaw 7900-2011, Amendment Bylaw 8675-2024, Amendment 53. Bylaw 8675 proposes to amend the OCP land use designation of the subject site from residential level five low-density apartment RES5 to residential level six medium-density apartment RES6. District of North Vancouver rezoning bylaw 1437 bylaw 8676. Bylaw 8676 proposes to amend the district zoning bylaw by rezoning the site from single-family residential 7200 Zone RS3 to comprehensive development zone 154 CD154. The CD154 Zone addresses permitted and accessory uses and zoning provisions such as density amenities, setbacks, height, building and site coverage, landscaping and stormwater management, and parking, loading, and servicing requirements.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, staff presentation first. It's time I'll call on staff to come up and make the initial presentation from staff, followed by the applicant's presentation. Welcome. We afford the staff up to 15 minutes of presentation time at the front end of a public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council, members of the public. My name is Tash Chong, and I'm a development planner here with the District of North Vancouver. At tonight's public hearing, I'll be presenting a six-story purpose-built rental proposal at the properties 1149 and 1155 Lynn Valley Road. Associated with this proposal is an OCP amendment bylaw and a rezoning bylaw. Therefore, under the Local Government Act, a public hearing such as the one being held tonight is a legislative requirement. So the subject site highlighted in red is in the Lynn Valley Town Centre, and is currently made up of two existing single-family zone lots. Consistent with the OCP, the surrounding area is planned to see higher-density developments with sites such as the vacant Black Bear Pub and Safeway adjacent to the proposal. The site is well-served by public transit and active transit options, as the shared Lynn Valley cycling network is located on its frontage, as shown in blue here. And the district's future greenway pathway is located at the site's rear and eastern property line, as shown in green here, envisioned in the Lynn Valley Public Realm Design Guidelines. The district hall is also close by, across the street, and there are several multifamily developments ranging from three to four stories in height. So moving on to the project itself, the applicant Red Brick Properties is proposing a six-story purpose-built rental development at a density of 2.88 FSR, so floor space ratio, for a total of 66 market rental units with a mix of studio and one and two bedrooms. The proposal includes five enhanced two-bedroom units, which is consistent and goes beyond what is required in the district's accessibility design policy. And in terms of parking options, the proposal is also consistent with the district's alternative vehicle rate policy and will be providing 58 stalls over two-and-a-half levels of parking. So here we have the site plan, just to show you how the site is being used and improved. So first and foremost, the main entrance is located off of Lynn Valley Road, while vehicle access also on Lynn Valley Road is often existing easement on the neighboring property parking ramp. A lay-by area is also proposed to prevent traffic disruptions associated with any loading and collection services along Lynn Valley Road, as shown in yellow here. Other notable elements are the significant 2.1-meter-wide land dedication, shown in red, which will be utilized to improve cycling connections on Lynn Valley Road, along with two pedestrian greenway pathways being constructed at the expense of the applicant, as shown in green here. The proposal was reviewed against and is consistent with district policy as identified on the screen, and I should mention also consistent with reports identified on the screen. Specifically, in responding to the need for more purpose-built rentals, in addition to the need for higher percentage of one-bedroom units in the district, the 66-unit rental project contributes towards addressing the critical shortage of rental supply in the district, thereby increases rental options and housing choice for renters. Now, to help with the rental tenure demanded to perspective, I've highlighted on the screen a graphic that displays the number of new net rezoned units since 2011 across housing tenure in the five key town and village centers identified by the OCP. The Lynn Valley Town Centre is outlined in red. So market rental tenure is shown in letter turquoise, while ownership is displayed in darker blue. And as shown on the screen, almost all of the units in the Lynn Valley Town Centre within the last 15 years has been ownership. This really highlights the need for rental units in this town centre and foregrounds how rental tenure is disproportionately underrepresented compared to strata development, so ownership, when compared against town centres as well. So consistent with district non-statutory consultation policy and tonight's public hearing notification measures, members of the public have had ample opportunity to provide their input. For example, the applicant hosted a two-week virtual public information meeting, so a PIM, and an in-person PIM to inform the public of the proposal. In total, the applicant received seven unique comments for this round of consultation. And in relation to tonight's public hearing notification, as of about 4:30 this afternoon, we received approximately 14 submissions. So in terms of the overall feedback, staff received a range of perspectives. There were concerns about the lack of affordable housing, emphasizing the need for more options in the community, with one comment particularly from a neighboring property concerned about height. Conversely, there was strong support for the rental tenure, which was seen to be contributing to positive effects in meeting local housing needs. I'll also note that we received a couple of comments from the Dakota Residence, which is the neighboring property with the easement, who while recognizing that Lynn Valley does need more housing, they had general concerns and questions about the driveway access. So during the proposal's bylaw introduction on July 8th, council provided some commentary and raised questions that required more technical responses from staff. To respond to council, staff prepared an information report, which was circulated in advance of this public hearing. Here in my presentation, I'll briefly touch upon these staff responses. The first I would like to address council's comment in relation to the proposed driveway location over the existing neighboring parking ramp and safety aspects crossing the cycling route on Lynn Valley Road. So staff review, or staff's review of the vehicle access have concluded that the proposed access point is the best option. As a resulting increase in traffic volume generated from the proposal is considered minimal, with findings revealing low vehicle trips during peak morning and peak afternoon hours. In addition, no new conflict points along Lynn Valley Road would be generated with this access, minimizing the interruptions and disruptions on Lynn Valley Road. The only other potential access would be via the one-way northbound service lane. However, this is currently not feasible. I'll also mention, though not yet planned or approved, there's the potential of formalizing a protected cycling lane along Lynn Valley Road, including green road markings across the driveway to help improve safety measures for the long term. Next, there was a general question as to why this proposal could not offer any below-market rental units. So in accordance with the district's CAC policy, this proposal went through a performer review. This is the same process undertaken by other negotiated CAC projects in the district, whereby the performer is reviewed by an independent third-party consultant to assess whether there is an increase in land value as a result of the rezoning. In this case, it was determined that this proposal did not generate a land lift, meaning there was no increase in land value. Therefore, for this proposal, in accordance with the policy, there is no additional community amenity contribution in the form of below-market units. That being said, staff are happy to respond if council has additional questions, but would like to highlight that rental projects such as this one support a much lower rezoned value than ownership projects, since the value of a rental project is lower than the value of an ownership project, but the costs to build both are typically similar. Then there was some discussion about tree loss on the site. During the review, this proposal, or during the review of this proposal, sorry, a large effort was undertaken to see if any of the onsite trees could be saved, particularly the ones, the larger ones, fronting Lynn Valley Road. However, the critical root zones are all in conflict with the site excavation and the necessary civil works, especially along Lynn Valley frontage. So as a result of this, staff have determined that a much more effective approach is to actually remove the existing trees and replace them with larger trees. To do this, staff have worked with the applicant to redesign the parcade, which effectively reduces the retaining wall, parking slab along Lynn Valley Road, to increase the soil volume, which will accommodate the planting of larger tree species. Detailed information regarding the tree species and soil volume design will be developed at the development permit stage, should the rezoning proceed. And then finally, a question was raised regarding the scope and feasibility of the construction management of this project. So as for district standards, the applicant submitted a preliminary construction traffic management plan, which has been reviewed extensively by staff, and we are confident that this proposal can be built as per their design. As noted on the screen, the plan shows that construction-related activities will be accommodated in the lay-by loading area and sidewalk along the frontage of Lynn Valley Road, which is identified in yellow. As noted on the screen, the plan shows that construction-related activities will be... Sorry, that's good. However, given the anticipated closure of the sidewalk of Lynn Valley Road, staff have requested that the applicant consider alternating the closures and opening of the sidewalk and to schedule sidewalk closures to coincide with times when pedestrian traffic is lower. So this is my last slide, which summarizes the on- and off-site civil work contributions of this proposal. In addition to 66 rental units, this project would deliver substantial off-site infrastructure contributions worth $750,000, so DCCs and land dedications outlined here. This will go long, this will go a long way towards achieving the public realm, greenway, and active transportation network envisioned in the Lynn Valley Town Centre, active transportation and public realm design strategy. So in conclusion, the six-story rental project would deliver 66 market rental units in the heart of Lynn Valley Town Centre. It assists in the implementation of the district's OCP objectives and the Lynn Valley Town Centre plan through the delivery of rental housing and the significant off-site improvements. So that concludes my presentation, and I will now pass it over to the applicant, who will be making a presentation. So thank you very much.
The representative from Red Brick, you have again 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and thank you for your attention this evening. My name is Abdul Juwan, and I'm the president of the applicant Red Brick Properties. I'm here with our architect Eric Vanderputten from Wonder Architecture and Design. On behalf of the team at Red Brick, I'm pleased to present a proposal for the redevelopment of this prominent site in the Lynn Valley Town Centre and located at 1149 and 1155 Lynn Valley Road. We have carefully considered feedback from staff, council priorities, and the objectives of the official community plan and its related documents to provide a proposal that will enhance housing options in the District of North Vancouver. Red Brick Properties is a local, family-owned company with our head office in New Westminster. We have been in business for close to 25 years, and our business is exclusively rental. We develop, own, manage, and renovate multifamily residential rental properties throughout Metro Vancouver. These are located in New Westminster, Burnaby, Coquitlam, Vancouver, the city of North Vancouver, and we have now entered the District of North Vancouver. Our business model is to hold and operate our properties for a long-term investment rather than to sell. We operate extremely well-maintained buildings with an excellent tenant base, and we aim to be a positive presence in every community in which we do business. We are notable for having developed the first 100% purpose-built rental building in the city of Coquitlam in the previous four decades. That project totaled 41 units. It completed in 2020, and it kick-started the city of Coquitlam's housing affordability strategy, which resulted in thousands of rental units in the planning stage and under construction. We continue to own and operate that successful project to this day. It shows Metro Vancouver's population growth versus the change in purpose-built rental units for the last 20 years. It also shows the current rental inventory by municipality. Metro Vancouver has an overwhelming need for more rental housing, having only increased its purpose-built rental stock by close to 11,000 units over the past 33 years, a period which saw the population increase by close to 1.4 million people. The District of North Vancouver currently has a stock of 2,099 rental units, which represents about 1.7% of the region's total. The district would benefit greatly from more purpose-built rental housing. While the district has historically been an ownership municipality at 76% of its total housing stock, which is far above the metro average, we believe this is ripe for change. Households wanting more affordable options, and in particular, market rental options, would like the opportunity to make the district their home. Further, in today's economic environment, market rents rather than ownership and not market rents are considerably more affordable than ownership, not including the overwhelming down payments for ownership. This is the widest gap we have seen favoring rental affordability in the past 25 years. This is a chart of the net new units rezoned by Town Centre since the adoption of the 2011 community plan. Within the district, there are multiple Town Centres. Each of the Town Centres has had some success in generating net new rental units. The one exception is Lynn Valley. It has not generated any net new rental units since the adoption of the 2011 community plan, and rather since this time has lost a net 19 rental units. Lynn Valley clearly needs more purpose-built rental units. Currently on-site at 1149 and 1155 Lynn Valley Road are two single-family homes dating to 1968 and 1950 respectively, both of which are at the end of their useful life, in poor condition and unsightly. The site is underutilized and is an excellent location and opportunity to accommodate more housing. Red Brick Properties has proposed to develop this gateway site with a six-story wood-framed 66-unit purpose-built 100% market rental building. Our design is exceptional, having received unanimous support at the advisory design panel and substantial positive commentary at the public information meetings, both in, both virtually and in person. The proposal includes two studios, 53 one-bedroom units and 11 two-bedroom units, a suite mix that aligns closely with rental housing demand, rental housing formation in Metro Vancouver, and the District of North Vancouver's Housing Needs Report housing requirements over the next two to seven years. We have incorporated into the design 58 total parking stalls on two-and-one-half levels, 51 of which for the residents and seven for visitors. In addition, we are offering 111 bicycle stalls, with six of those being short-term. Our plans include extensive and beautiful landscaping throughout the site, including the surrounding areas of the new pathways at the southeast and east of the site, which will be completed as part of the off-site requirements. Our proposal includes many outstanding benefits for the community: 66 new incremental secured rental housing stock without displacement; all units comply with DMV's basic accessibility requirements, with five at the enhanced level of accessibility; 105 long-term bicycle stalls, including six family stalls with an additional six short-term stalls. The proposal also includes a 2.1-meter dedication on Lynn Valley Road for a bike lane that integrates with the planned municipal bicycle network. We have designed and will build out the greenway and pathway at the rear and east of the site, and the building will comply with STEP Code 3 Low Carbon Systems of the Building Code. Lastly, the site is located on a frequent transit network in a Town Centre, offering multimodal transit options to residents. The application is consistent with district policies as represented by the official community plan and its related documents. In particular, the official community plan encourages alternatives to homeownership and notes that only 18% of dwelling units in the district are rental. The OCP action plan prioritizes rental housing within Town Centres and along frequent transit lines. The rental and affordable housing strategy emphasizes expanding the supply and diversity of housing choices in a Town Centre while expanding the supply of new rental housing. The Rental Social and Affordable Housing Task Force report includes the goals of expanding the supply and diversity of housing, and specifically rental housing. I will now turn over the presentation to Eric Vanderputten of Wonder Architecture and Design, and he will walk you through some of the architectural design elements of our proposal.
Thank you, Abdul. My name is Eric Vanderputten, architect and partner at Wonder Architecture, also a lead designer of the award-winning Kwonis Lynn Woods project that was located nearby this current site. As Abdul highlighted, we know there is a lack of housing options in North Vancouver, and this project will contribute meaningfully in providing more housing options. But I think this project can address those other challenges and other ideas that are outlined within some of the DMV's policy. So when we look at the surrounding site, go to the next slide. We see that Lynn Valley Road is a major commuter corridor. 1111, our neighbor to the west, or Dakota Properties, suffers from a lack of a delivery drop-off at their site and taxi pickup space, which also contributes to Lynn Valley, the congestion along Lynn Valley, and the pedestrian circulation is somewhat uncomfortable. And as you can see, the current cycling infrastructure is rather undefined, and our site's obviously just beyond this. So I think the question is, how can our project be a catalyst to not only add housing, but to improve the congestion, develop bike infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure, and reflect the natural beauty of Lynn Town Centre in the North Shore? So there's our site, and I put that arrow because we're going to be kind of looking at our site from that angle. So there's our site. This is kind of a representation, a representation of the two existing homes that we'll be removing. And if we take that site and we extrude it up, you can see that there's, you know, we can add, you know, a substantial number of units, but that doesn't add too much for, for the infrastructure around the project. So what we've done, and you know, some of this is requirements from the DMV, but we've pushed back and widened Lynn Valley Road. We've provided a parking pocket along that northern edge, so that's going to provide space for the van drop-off for, you know, delivery drivers, drivers like Amazon or Ubers to be picked up. We've pushed in from the side, so we've pushed in from 1111 where the parking ramp is to give it a little bit more space and along, along the lane to allow for those trees that are there to be retained. And then we've pushed in substantially from the rear to provide an amenity area that will be for the future residents of our project, but also helps provide kind of eyes on the street to the rear greenway. So here you can see where the parking access is. That's a little image of an Amazon delivery truck and an Uber kind of using that lay-by area, both for our site, and we'd expect or anticipate that the Dakota property to the west could also use that. I think important to note is we, as Tash had pointed out, we have looked at, you know, trying to access the site off the lane. We don't have legal access across the Safeway site and the Crombie Reeds site. So the best point of access for us is that existing parking ramp, and I think it's also contributes to the project's sustainability using existing infrastructure and purposefully to also allow us to have, add additional homes onto our site. Pushing back and widening that street allows for that bike lane, for a more defined bike lane that will be, that will go down Lynn Valley Road. You can see the greenway at the back, with us pushing back allows for that greenway to breathe a little bit more. Again, like I mentioned, on that street, that make it a little bit more safer from a SEPT head point of view. And then, and then that connecting path, connecting those two together from the bike lane to that greenway, so that, you know, pedestrians can circulate comfortably around our site. From an architectural perspective, we broke down the massing a little bit so that we don't have a monotonous project, not just face along a Lynn Valley Road. The entry, as was mentioned, is located adjacent to the parking ramp, along with our amenities, and we've softened the massing somewhat to, that faces 1111, to try to respect the minor height difference that, that exists. And that's kind of what it looks like. Excellent. So, so that's kind of how we're envisioning the project to come together. You can see kind of the lay-by that's there. So so that's kind of how we're envisioning the project to come together. You can see kind of the layby that's there. The bike path that is somewhat now defined, which is going to create a level of safety. And then the expression of that glass entry area, which is our amenity space that will that will also. Provide a level of relationship, our building relating to that area where people are getting picked up from Ubers or getting, you know, Amazon deliveries to create an active street print. This is a how we envision the rear lane to somewhat. Rear greenway to somewhat be expressed with a fairly wide path to the south. We have our our landscape amenity. Deck elevated somewhat. So there's a a nice. Sectional aspect there. And then we have that greenway or that pathway that's that's connecting that greenway to the south as well to the north. There's a close up shot of our amenity space. We anticipate there to be a small amenity space for. Residents exercising and using, you know, fitness facilities. With the caveat that there is, you know, amazing, I think Karen Magnuson Rec Center that is within probably on a seven minute walk from the site. And then we have other features like inaccessible ramp that you can kind of see going off to the left. And finally, that's kind of a an image that encapsulates or captures the entire project with that that pathway to the to the south and. Us really working hard to to maintain a level of greenery along Lynn Valley Road.
We would like to thank staff for their diligent and hard work on our proposal to council this evening. And specifically our planners, Tash Young, Frankie McAdam, Darren Varesz and the manager of development planning, Yan Zhang. Thank you.
One to the start of the public input. And so the signup list that we started with beforehand, and we've added some names as people arrived here this evening. Starts with Russell Wong, followed by Peter Thanis or Tennis.
Sorry, is there somewhere I can plug this in?
It's just under the edge of the desk down the.
Thank you.
On the other side, there you go. Apple or or PC?
PC.
Should work perfectly then.
Awesome. Alright. Hello, my name is Russell Wong. I'm a member of a volunteer group called the Vancouver Area Neighbors Association. I don't work in development or real estate and I'd like to speak in support of this project. I think most people would agree that housing in Metro Vancouver is terribly scarce and expensive. Younger people are being crushed and driven out by the high cost of housing. Even in twenty fifteen, you needed a household income of a hundred thousand dollars or more to be able to move here, and it's only gotten worse since then. Because we don't have enough housing, prices and rents have to rise to unbearable levels to force people to give up and move away. High housing costs act like a barrier or a filter keeping people out. Even for older homeowners, this is a bad situation. Because younger people can't afford to live here, the healthcare system is under increasing strain. A friend who worked in operations management at a Vancouver hospital. Reported that the last time they had to hire an anesthesiologist, it took eighteen months. In most places, you'd be able to live close to the hospital, but not here. To fix this, we need a lot more housing. We have limited land in Metro Vancouver because of the ocean and the mountains. So it's really important to make a good use of the land that we do have instead of leaving it mostly empty. This site is right on Lynn Valley Road and it already has apartment buildings beside it and across the street. We especially need more purpose built rental housing like this project. The advantage of a purpose built rental project owned by an institution is that it provides secure housing without having to be rich enough to own. It's not like renting a condo or a basement suite from an individual landlord. Where the landlord can always reclaim it for their personal use and evict you. When we have a housing shortage, all housing helps whether it's market rate or non market. Every time a new building opens up and a hundred people move in, that's a hundred people who are no longer competing with everyone else over the limited supply of existing housing. New housing frees up older housing. I recognize that for people who live nearby, they'll most likely want to minimize change and to keep their neighborhood the way it is. But this has tremendous costs for everyone else. If this project is rejected, the sixty six renter households who would have lived there won't vanish into thin air. It's like pushing down on a balloon. They'll find somewhere else to live in the area and other people will get pushed out. I understand that some people have asked if it's possible to include non market rentals in the project. Unfortunately, it turns out that this doesn't really work for a six story rental project. Because there isn't enough land lift to absorb the costs. You would need something a lot bigger, like a high rise to make it work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Russell Wong. Next, Peter Thanis, followed by Lyle Craver.
Hello, my name is Peter Thanis. I'm a District of North Vancouver resident. I live very close by actually, and I'm speaking in. Support of this project. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the District of North Vancouver.
For the record, I am supposed to press you for a hundred block of approximately where you live.
Thirty eight hundred block.
Then of Queens?
No. Ever Everglade Place, right next to Bemar Elementary.
Thank you.
So I could actually walk there. So I have a couple of points here I'd like to to bring up, obviously addressing housing demand. North Vancouver is projected to grow by ten percent in the next decade, increasing the demand for rental housing. Constructing market specific rentals will provide more options for residents and help stabilize. Rent prices by adding much needed supply. My second point is obviously reducing commuting challenges. The Second Narrows Bridge sees over forty five thousand vehicles crossing daily. Contributing significantly to congestion, increasing local rental options. Would by allowing residents to live obviously closer to their to their place of of work will help. I believe of the total employee workforce on the North Shore, thirty percent actually commute over the Second Narrows Bridge. Obviously, providing rentals on the North Shore would help with that by having people live in the community that they work in. Clearly, people that live and work on our shore will obviously contribute to their to their local economy. And I believe that this project in itself should be considered a community amenity. From an economic standpoint. The average tenant, I think according to my stats here, I hope they're correct. Spends between twelve thousand to fifteen thousand annually on local goods and services. Therefore, purpose built rentals such as this project by Red Brick Properties should be considered. In itself, that community amenity from an economic standpoint. I hope you guys get where I'm kind of going with that, right? I think one of my final points, there's a few other points that I'm just going to skip past. Is I I think projects like this are so far in queue between. That the district and other municipalities should consider. Almost like additional incentives to to help these guys get up and running with their project. They're risking a lot of capital, their own capital. No one's there to bail them out, right? And they're providing something that's much needed in the community. And there's obviously a lot of risk in that too as well. In closing, by focusing on these market specific rental construction projects. The District of North Vancouver can create a sustainable, economically vibrant community. While alleviating traffic pressures on the Second Narrows Bridge. So. Those are my points. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, Peter Thanis. The next speaker I have is Lyle Craver, followed by Ben Patton. Welcome, Mr. Craver. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you, your worship. First off, Brian, I'll just start. Let me note that tonight, unlike last night, I am speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of Lynn Valley Community Association. The first thing we need to know about this property is the nature of the property itself. First off. This area is part of Lynn Valley Town Center area. The area is part, the area was originally residential and has since been resumed for five stories. It's part of the so called flexible framework, which I know was put into place by your predecessor. It was not, and the adoption of the flexible framework was never put to the public in any way before it came to council and. From talking to people in the area. I've never heard that the flexible framework really had that much of a public impact, but it is, it is what it is. This pro. One thing I note is that this project removes most of the remaining trees in the in the Lynn Valley Town Center area. And despite the pictures shown in. The proponents' presentation. Frankly, if there's one takeaway that you can get from the proponents' presentation is that none of the other properties. That are that were shown in their presentation frankly had much in the way of trees. In fact, I counted one tree in the four pictures of properties that they were showing. There were more in this one, but. This is not the proponent that can be counted on to be especially tree friendly. Now, this project is a pure market rental proposal. There is no discussion of submarket rental or anything else in this proposal as such. Looking at the proposal in detail. I see really no need to go anywhere at all beyond the O C P. I mean, the O C P is what it is. It's and if you take the Safeway proposal into account. What is either already built or or proposed? Goes even beyond the flexible framework, which was beyond the O C P in the first place. Assets. We have a problem here. In any case. In. In a meeting with the board of the Lynn Valley Community Association, the proponents spelled out to us that. This that in addition to being pure market rental, it was not primarily intended for current residents of North Vancouver City or District. Make of that what you will. One thing I noticed both in the staff report and in the proponents' report. Is, you know, in both sets of maps. There was reference to the Black Bear Pub. Now, as all of you know, the Black Bear Pub is defunct. It's been gone since November twenty twenty three. I'm mystified why it's even included at this point. But fundamentally, the re. Fundamentally, while I do think this particular property would benefit from being rebuilt in apartments. The fun. The fundamental issue at stake here is that this proposal would be fine if we're being built on the side street. It's not being built on the side street, it's being built. Right alongside one of the busiest arterial roads in the District of North Vancouver. As such, maintaining traffic flow. Is essential. And the one thing I see from the proponents' plans is that in their drawings of this project. Everything they have has virtually no off road exit except for the down ramp to the parking lot. And it has fencing, low fencing along most of the rest of it. My question is, what does that mean with respect to service vehicle access? What does that mean with respect to cabs? Ambulances, delivery vehicles? I'm mystified. Because Lynn Valley Road cannot and must not be intended to be used for delivery vehicles for this project. My time is done, so I will go for a second go around later on. Thank you very much.
Mr. Craver, just to be clear, I didn't ask you for your approximate address.
Four seven nine seven Hoskins Road.
Thank you very much.
In other words, I drive by this location regularly.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Ben Patton, followed by Gillian Const. Address? Yes, welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Perfect. Thank you for having me. My name is Ben Patton. My address is twenty four ten Kilmarnoch, so on from West Lynn Terrace. So fairly close, drive past every day. I have submitted submitted some of my written comments and notes, so I'll just kind of. Reframe and also just keep it a little bit shorter. One thing to note, I would like to mention for the landscape landscape design. There are at least twelve planted trees that are going to be in there, paper bark, maple. Alpo service berry, pink pom pom eastern red bud, slender hanoi key, false cypress, ginkgo, Siberian spruce, shore pine. Pyramid pine. So that there are trees in the the final design that'll definitely be in there. One of the key things being is I reached out to Red Brick Properties after seeing the North Shore News article related to the previous hearing. In which there were some concerns related to the stormwater management. The key thing being, I happen to have been the co author or one of the co authors of this enhanced. The Resolution for Enhanced Storm Water Mitigation Regulations that was presented through in June. June, yes. And that was presented in the past. That one of the key things being is I saw, I was trying to figure out what was wrong with the presentation with proposal, knowing that. Being a stream keeper, I'm very motivated to see a care for the streams. I went through and tried to figure out what's going on with this project. And looking over the project, I see absolutely nothing related to, nothing of concern related to stormwater management. They have some very, very forward thinking processes that they've installed or like they're. And created into the design. Some of them are related to the bio swell on along the back the back path directing downspouts into some of the established plantings that have different depths of height, which. All meet slow sink and spread requirements for ground for stormwater. One of the other things I want to be fully in full disclosure here, I do happen to be looking towards trying to offer a quote for the tree services that will eventually come up on site. One of the things that I have been advocating for for a long time is urban forest wood utility. I've been a very stubborn head when it comes to trying to get across through a lot of local communities and councils. One of the key things being is we've taken some great steps to actually understand where urban utility can be in a much better. Traditional path for the bylaw management, but this actually comes in on a developer standpoint. So the developers. When I brought forth this idea of salvaging the trees that are inevitably going to be coming down through the. Through the development present or development project. None during traditional processes, none of the trees usually get salvaged. I happen to be one of the few people that is operating a business related to salvaging trees. From the traditional waste process. So anytime trees that do come down, we're looking to actually be salvaged in the back into the site. And so that's where I came forward to Red Brick Properties to say, hey, look, not only is there something going on here with storm watch management. But now that they've through discussions told me that there is no tree contractor, that's where we're looking towards. The key thing to this is, I can't state this enough. It meets every zero waste circular economic and urban forest management plan. It happens to be a fundamental strategy for sustainable forest management. But it also, we're looking at potentially over twenty tons of embodied carbon. Being stored within the embodied carbon of the building, right? And that's reducing things like plastics, like metals. Specifically rated related to things like the benches along the back path. Related to some of the materials going on the nameplates for the front building. We're starting to try to figure out what could potentially be there from the standing wood that's. Right now going to potentially go to waste if another producer was going to be removing them. So that's one of the areas in which I'm trying to look towards some of the sustainability on the side of it and advocate for that. And that's where. Knowing through some of these major processes that they're looking towards, which. Note, I can actively say no developer is willing to take wood from the site and put it back onto the project without. Significant kind of headache these developers are, and that is groundbreaking in North Vancouver, and I can say that handsomely. But also I want to say the stormwater management absolutely is above board and. Meets all expectations and then some. So I do believe that through all of these things on those fronts, that's one of the reasons why I think this should absolutely go through. Not to mention, my wife would tell me if I didn't say. We need the rental units. We need the rental units. We're right now at my folks' house. And that's because I had to build out the basement suite in order to do that. And we're want to be able to expand even further than two kids. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Ben Patton. Next speaker I have is Gillian Const, followed by. Uh, next speaker I have is Gillian Const, followed by John Sharp. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you. Gillian Const, twenty-two forty-one Viewlin Drive. But tonight I'm here to represent Lynn Valley Community Association. We're not here to support, sorry, I keep moving away. We're not here to support or oppose this project, but rather to share some concerns. Our official community plan, as it currently stands, represents hundreds of volunteer hours. And emphasizes that Lynn Valley residents want a livable community. Despite provincial legislative changes, I practiced that all afternoon. I can't believe I said it. We hope and expect that the spirit of our O C P will survive the required revision and that council will ensure the livability of Lynn Valley. We have some concerns as to how this development proposal fits within the vision of the current O C P and potentially impacts the goal of a livable community. Firstly, we would like to know if there's going to be a covenant in place to preserve this as a rental building so that we maintain the mix of housing that we're looking for. The applicant is requesting additional height beyond the five stories designated under the flexible framework. Which has already increased density beyond what was originally defined in the O C P. And the number of developments in the town centre that have already been considered and approved for extra height. Has already exceeded the number that we were promised when the flexible framework was first developed. Why are there no below-market rentals in this proposal, given the housing crisis which every level of government is trying to address? And the additional height that is being sought? The anticipated rental rates as presented to L V C A in November twenty twenty-three and which will have undoubtedly risen. Will not be affordable to locals who perhaps wish to leave the nest or to downsize. The O C P emphasizes the desire for people to stay in their community and to live, excuse me, and to live and work here. In fact, we desperately need people to stay here, to live and work locally, whether they're fixing your plumbing, working in a school or coffee shop, or taking care of you in the hospital. This would also significantly address traffic goodlock, the old experience on an almost daily basis. There is no on-street parking in this vicinity and transit options that would reduce dependency on the car have not materialized. Worse, Translink have indicated that there may be reduced transit service on the North Shore. We don't believe there's sufficient parking built into this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments, Gillian Const. Next speaker I have is John Sharp, followed by Alex Galloway. Is John joining us virtually? Uh, just want to, uh. So none of the virtual attendees appeared to represent John Sharp. So if you have a different name on your login, if you could change it to reflect John Sharp or. Raise your hand. Your virtual hand. I'm going to cycle back to, uh, John Sharp then. Uh, so the next speaker I have is Alex Galloway. Uh, joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Hi, can you hear me?
Clearly.
My name's Alix Galloway. I live in the district of North Vancouver. I'm just off of twentieth on Barren, so that's a five-minute car ride away or twenty-minute walk. I support the rezoning of this market rental. Metro Vancouver has a housing shortage. Not building enough units means in the district means people just move to other parts of Metro Vancouver. Which puts pressure on existing Metro Vancouver housing stock. Creating more multi-unit dwellings in places where single-family homes exist adds much-needed multifamily housing to the overall housing stock in Metro Vancouver. Adding rental units takes pressure off the existing housing stock throughout the entire metro area. The best way to prevent gentrification in middle-income and lower-income areas is to upzone. Wealthier neighborhoods that are zoned for single-family housing only. Developers can then build more units in places where lots of people want to live, like the district. This rezoning is one example of an upzoning from a single-family housing zone to a multi-unit dwelling zone. This rezoning is an example of how the district of North Vancouver can do its small part to help solve the Metro Vancouver housing shortage. Rezoning by rezoning, redevelopment by redevelopment. I imagine a future where Vancouver home prices and Vancouver rents stabilize and perhaps even fall a little bit. Thank you for your time.
If your comments, Alex Galloway.
Um, should I submit this anywhere or no?
If you'd like to, you can put it in the black tray on the corner of the desk there and we'll, uh, scan it and share it with the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so just circling back, if we had any of the virtual attendants say they're John Sharp. Okay, so I'm afraid we're going to move along. Would anybody else like to address the public hearing for a first time? And I'll include virtual attendees if you can raise your hand as well. Yes?
I just have a couple of comments.
I need you to come up to the microphone and, uh, identify yourself and then we'll, we'll carry on from there. Uh, when you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Name is Marilyn Harkness. I live at thirty-eight thirty-three Lynn Valley Road.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm just a little concerned that this had somehow, this project has somehow managed to jump from five stories to six. The presentation, I mean, this has been through several hoops along the way. The presentation that was made by the developer. Showed five stories. So people's responses were to five stories, not six. My other concern is that it was made perfectly clear in that presentation. Um, that. The developer is interested in. Foreign professional renters rather than the people who live in Lynn Valley. And that is a big concern of mine. We have so many people who have to travel. An hour and a half each way to try and come to work in the valley. And so that is, that is a concern. Um, and can I just get clarification? Is there now, uh, a, a delivery bay, a parking area in front of the development?
I believe that was part of the, the, the slideshow at the, at the beginning.
Yeah. Okay, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, okay, would anybody else like to speak for a first time? Kelsey Smart, okay. So we see virtual participant Kelsey Smart, and we're just moving you over to the panel now. Kelsey Smart, you should be connected to the meeting now. I do see you as muted, but are you able to hear me?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome. I can hear, I can hear you clearly. Welcome. Uh, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you, your worship. My name is Kelsey Smart. I live in the Dakota in the eleven hundred block of Lynn Valley Road. And my interest or concern in this issue is, um, as you all may have heard, the Dakota, the name of our building was mentioned because we are adjacent to this proposed development. So I would like to point out that I have zero issue with most of the points that have been raised here. Um, for example, we do need market rental housing. I think one of the previous points that was brought up about, um, preventing. Or helping mitigate gentrifying of lower-income areas can be mitigated by allowing developments like this in middle or higher-income neighborhoods. So I'm, I'm all for that. So I'm not, I'm not doing a, not in my backyard. I don't want this development thing. Um, yes, of course, it will cause change for us, and that's not the most pleasant, but my main issue with this is the driveway. Um, where we are told it is an easement, and so it, I, I'm not understanding and I'm having difficulty with. It, our driveway that goes down to our parcade that the Dakota owns and therefore the sixty owners in our building own and have to pay for the maintenance and repairs. Of that driveway, we're being told that. This development, if it goes through, will simply have access to this driveway. Uh, do we continue to own it? Are we responsible for the cost of repairs and maintenance now that it's going to get? A whole bunch more use. Um. So who takes on that cost? Is anything being offered to us in exchange for just beginning to use this driveway? And not only that, I'm not sure if anybody here has tried driving up or down that driveway, but, um, it's very narrow. It's not, we don't feel that it would be safe to have. Like, we're only sixty units, six-zero, and so if we bring on, if a whole other building is now using our driveway. Um, that doubles the use of the driveway. It's, it's not very safe for people to pass as it is. Often somebody will stop illegally, but will stop on the driveway, um, you know, to drop something off or whatever. So it's just, it, the increased volume. We, a lot of the owners in this building are quite concerned about that issue. Um, I will also point out that it's nice that the developers are talking about. How there's a rec center nearby for, for owners to, for, uh, tenants in that building to use. The rec center is already overcrowded and. Perhaps the developer can offer something in the way of, like, it's just, it's. Our community amenities and resources are already quite stretched, and so I am in support of a project here that. You know, is market rentals, but just with those issues, the driveway, um, the. Congestion on the street. I do appreciate that there would be that spot at the front of their building where deliveries can occur, so thank you. Um, but what do we do about the rec center? That's, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I think there are some questions coming up from council that will help, uh, give some clarity to that question. Uh, we'll make sure that that issue of whether the code is compensated, uh, is addressed. Okay, uh, that was, uh, Kelsey Smart. Thank you very much for your presentation. Would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first time? Okay, so I'm going to stop. Oh, sorry, I have, uh, Corey Cost virtual hand up. Uh, Dr. Cost, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, well, first you have a severe technical problem. I could not put my hand up. That's the first time that's ever happened. So I.
Our, our staff could see your, our staff saw your hand up and gave me a note saying that your hand was up.
That's only after I crashed the whole thing and restarted the program and came second time. So. Clearly, there's a technical problem here. Never encountered. But anyway, my name is Corey Cost. I live at twenty-eight fifty-one Calder Drive. Uh, would like to make some comments. They are my own and not of any organization that I may belong to. Um, and I'm going to, uh, not be either for or against this project, but I want to note, uh, a few issues. Now, my favorite pet issues, which of course is parkland. There are sixty-six units here with a hundred and thirty people. Um, one acre of parkland is about four thousand and forty-seven square meters. That'll come in handy later. Um, so where is the required roughly one acre of? Uh, parkland for this proposal? No, there's a hundred and thirty. Uh, generally eight acres are required in total per thousand people. This is a hundred and thirty people here, I estimate. Um, the adjacent park space is especially important during pandemics. This will show up in some future time again, I'm quite sure. Um. The search for, if you search for park space during pandemics, there would be a plethora of information that I think is useful to council. Uh, and that all can be found out in the web, why we need park space, both nearby the facilities, especially high-rises. Um. The elephant in the room has always been this, the. Ins- insufficient amount of park space that comes along with it. A hundred and twenty square meters, that is, goes along with this project. Uh, is about three percent of the required total space. And if you say, well, only ten percent needs to be close by, then ten percent is far greater than the three percent that's given. So it falls in deficiency in many different ways. Uh, so the cannibalization of our existing parkland is continuing. It has gone on for some time. But there will be a reckoning on this in the future, I'm sure. Now about the affordable housing. Um, a remark has been made that there's affordable housing. Um. That's available in the towers, but I, I understand. Um, that there has been difficulty in the past and might be in the current situation as well. That these towers that have of affordable housing, their affordable housing units are not occupied. Uh, if this is still true today, that's, uh, an important issue of why that is the case. So those are, uh, points I wanted to make. Um. I think I've hit all of the numbers that I want to hit. As, again, I must repeat, I'm neither for nor against. Especially since this is not in my backyard area. I live near Edgemont Village. And I'm just trying to inform and. Keep nudging at council about the issue of parkland. I think it's not nice to cannibalize our existing park space. Uh, by the developer not putting in his fair share of park space. So thank you for allowing me to speak. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments, Corey Cost. Would anybody else like to address the meeting for a first time? Confirm there, are there any virtual participants? Okay, so we've, we've gone through the speakers list for a first time. I, I know a number of questions have been accruing from council, so council has the opportunity to ask clarifying questions as the process unfolds. And I know there's quite a number of questions that have been presented. Uh, just checking with staff, uh, do you need a little more time to respond to those? Are you prepared to give response, read out those questions and resp, uh, and give your responses at this time? Okay. Five minutes, okay. Um, council, it's your pleasure. You want to go on to second time speakers while staff are responding and then we'll, uh. And then we'll check back in with staff at that point, or do you want to take a break? Press on. All right, fantastic. Okay, so would anybody else like to address the hearing for a second time? Alf Craver, come on up.
Thank you, worship. Final favor, four seven nine seven Hoskins Road, Upper Lynn Valley. Again, uh, there's, there does seem to be some misapprehension about some of my earlier comments. I want to clarify a few points. First off. North Fan District very much does need this type of housing. It, it does. That's unequivocal. Next, second point. The picture that the proponents showed with respect to that section of Lynn Valley Road. Uh, shows a complete misapprehension of the current state of Lynn Valley Road. In the section of Lynn Valley Road from, say. Kirkstone Way to Mountain Highway. First off, I have driven that road for thirty-plus years, and in that time. Including during the midnight to three A M segment, I have never once seen only one car in view there. This, I would have zero objections to this project in its current form. If it were located on Twenty-seventh Street or some other close-by street. I, I do think that the. I, I do think that the traffic issues presented by this project make it. Entirely problematic in its present form on a major arterial. And that section of Lynn Valley Road is one of the heaviest volume traffic in all of the district of North Vancouver. Again, we need this kind of housing. We do have natural traffic flows in the district of North Vancouver, and this is one of the heaviest. While I certainly don't expect Red Brick to correct that problem. I don't expect them to make it any worse than it already is either. Again. I did not know before I came to the public hearing tonight that the proposal was to share. A driveway that existed now. That is felt to be adequate for the existing residents. But they would be present, but they would be increasing the traffic on that ramp, on that lane. Roughly four or fivefold or so. Again. Most of my objections to the part, uh, to the project in its current form would be addressed. If it were ten to fifteen feet further back from Lynn Valley Road, which is shown on their map. As being the area that they intend to use as a major access point during construction. Fact is. Right now, we have a major bus route running through there, we have a bike lane running through there. And we have increasing loads of traffic running through there. At all costs, we must do anything to make it worse than it already is. And the way that lane is set and the way that. Lane is already set out, if anybody stalls for any reason. On that downwind, it will stall traffic on the Valley Road. Again, I am, the, the major thing, I am not satisfied. With the layout of this plan, these position of the apartment building on the property. Fact is, there is not adequate access off the valley road. And if you're going to require deliveries to deliver in the section between the former Black Bear. And the back of the building, then you are going to need very, very good signing. Because the first time anybody stops on Lynn Valley Road, especially during rush hour. You will have, have gridlock roughly two or three blocks in, in that direction. Secondly, again, that's the number one issue. Finally, on the matter of notification of residency in the area. This is an ongoing problem with North Van District, the existing policy does not work. And when we're talking about, and when we're talking about notification in a major town center. One hundred meters is simply not enough. I read about this through the newspaper. Obviously, I'm all keyed in to events at district councils and many in the community. But fundamentally, we must not strangle our major arterials. And I do believe this project accomplishes that goal. Thank you.
Your comments, Lyle Craver. Would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first or second time? The virtual participants? Staff, I've bought you as much time as I can. Perhaps we can start going through the questions and hearing your responses.
Yes, we're ready. Go ahead.
Here we go, you can hear me. So the first question I have is. Can staff clarify location of alternative access, the unopened lane and why it is not suitable? So to answer this question, the northbound lane is between the subject site and the vacant Black Bear Pub site. While the lane is owned by the district, there's an easement with the Safeway Grocery Store. Specifically for the purpose of uninterrupted loading and services needs. So it's currently only permitting exiting from the lane onto Lynn Valley Road. With entrance of the loading vehicles from Twenty Seventh Avenue. So it's not a two-way traffic street or service lane, I should say. Until uh in the future, the Safeway site redevelops, the nature of this lane will be very limited. And serves the loading needs of the Safeway site. Uh, and then also touching upon the unopened lane in the rear uh of the property, uh, so just along the south rear lane. Uh, this is not feasible, given it's envisioned for the pedestrian and cycling greenway pathway. As identified in the Lynn Valley uh public realm guidelines.
There's, there's a couple more questions about that. Can we come back to you after we've, yeah?
Great. Uh, so the second question I have, why remove current trees and replace with larger trees? Uh, the existing trees are in various states of health. So some of them are in good conditions, but are all in conflict with the excavation and civil works upgrades. So normally in this uh case, planting new, healthy, younger trees on site. With proper accommodation, so a larger soil volume allows the new trees. Um, more of an ecological service for long-term survival. Uh, so in short, replacement in this case has been deemed a better strategy to ensure the tree survival. So much of the critical root zones, as I mentioned before, are within the civil work upgrades. And after consulting with district staff, in addition to the consultants, arborists. We, if we attempt to retain these trees, there's no guarantee that they will survive, given many of them are growing in a hedge. So the third question, please clarify the location of the visitor parking and if it is meant to be shared with the adjacent Dakota building. So no, visitor parking is located in the underground parking uh on site of the proposed development. So no visitor parking will be shared with the Dakota residents. Next up, we have, the parking ramps appear to align with the proposed Crombie REIT proposal to the south. Do they line up? Could they be connected with a knockout wall to allow for more egress options, including exiting to uh East Twenty Seventh? So to answer that, the parking ramp as proposed is using the existing ramp off of the Dakota Residence. Directly to the south of it is this area, um, which is actually the Le Chateau rental development. So the two don't line up. Uh, what is possible is that when the Safeway site does redevelop. The service lane may become a two-way service lane plus the green uh greenway pathways. So this will allow the future greenway along both the eastern and the service um. Lane and the south rear lane uh to include cyclists and pedestrian access. So as of right now, staff have not uh received a formal application from Safeway Site. Or Crombie REIT, I should say. So the next question, can staff provide any more detail on plans for replanting of trees on site? So staff have required that the replacement trees along Lynn Valley Road be more of a substantial size, as I've mentioned. So because the underground parcade is to the property line about Lynn Valley Road. This actually will require a different redesign of the level one parcade to reduce the headroom. And to encase a box or a large trench that will provide the needed soil volume for these trees. Uh, so at this point, the specific tree species have yet to be determined. Um, it'll be subject to the arborist and staff review at the development permit stage, should the rezoning proceed. And then bonding for the continued survival of these newly trees will also be secured. What protections are in place to make certain this will be a rental project in perpetuity? So as for the Local Government Act, section two nineteen of the act enables municipalities to enter into agreements with private property owners. So to ensure this um project, or I should say to ensure that the rentals are secured in perpetuity. Uh, staff are recommending that the district enter into a section two nineteen um covenant. So that the rentals will be secured in perpetuity or for the life of the building. Next up, we have, how much additional density would be required to allow for the inclusion of any non-market units? And I'll let my manager Yan Ting take this one.
Yeah, sure, thanks. Uh, so I think there are two aspects to look at this question. Uh, likely this is a more of a project economic question, so I think I will leave that to the applicant to provide an answer. Uh, what staff can do is to address this from a policy perspective. So the performer analysis, as we said, for this uh proposal, proposal show that there is no increase in land value. As a result of the rezoning, as a result of allowing this six-story rental to proceed. So this is not really surprising to staff. Uh, because generally market rental projects generally carry a very lower, carry a lower value as opposed to condo development. Um, but particularly development of this scale, which is anywhere between four to six story. Uh, even though their wood frame development, uh, cheaper to build, still has a very thin project margin. And so um, in this case, because this is a pretty constrained urban site. Um, the only way to add additional density is to build up. And so um, what you see is that in the market, there really isn't anything between six story. And say a twelve story, so the next tranche of development is really a twelve-story concrete building. And so um, because of the code implication, building code implications. So it is not really possible for uh, for this development, this site to carry a twelve-story concrete building. Um, in addition to this, uh, this particular site has three frontages and all carry uh. Frontage upgrade requirements as well as some off-site requirements. So in total, that the cost for this project is quite high. The applicant has a response to, to provide as well.
So um, I can first respond to the current project, which we've evaluated carefully. And so on the six-story project, there is no ability to provide any CAC amount for exactly the reasons that staff outlined. Which is that it's not financially feasible. There is no additional um land lift or additional profit available for that. Um, not only have we evaluated it, staff have evaluated independently and are required to provide. Um, an independent analysis from Coriolis, I can tell you the Coriolis Consulting does very good work in this regard. And they have determined through their analysis that there is no land lift as a result of the perform analysis. Now, if the question is whether or not there's an additional density that could generate a below-market component. We have not specifically evaluated that for this project because it's maxed out at six stories. We have seen some analysis in Coriolis that indicated that you'd need at least four, in more favorable economic conditions in two thousand and eighteen. When interest rates were quite a bit lower and construction costs were substantially lower. That you'd need at least four FSR before you begin to see a positive land lift. Um, which is not feasible in a six-story framework. But in our analysis, we've never seen it work, ever, at any density. If you look at, when you start going above six stories, now you're looking at twelve stories and above, talking about high-rise, you're talking about concrete. The construction costs increase astronomically, and as it is the case in the last two years, construction hard costs have gone up by fifty percent. And since two thousand and twenty-one, interest rates are up by about six times. So we've not seen any scenario where it makes any economic sense. We have stringent rent control in this province. What that means is we've seen in the last five years, the average rent increased about one point four percent when inflation is multiple times that. So realistically, a rental project is severely constrained by regulations. So we've been in the business for twenty-five years, our portfolio runs roughly thirty percent below market, some units are fifty percent below market. So it's a misnomer to suggest that market rental is actually market rental, that's not the way it works. And that severely constrains the financial viability of a rental project. It's very difficult to put up a rental project in this environment.
Steph?
Okay, so the next question, what arrangements are in place between Dakota and this project regarding the access? So I think first, what's important to note is the driveway access uh over the subject site has always been envisioned. So at the time of the rezoning of the Dakota Development and access easement, so in legal agreement, was registered on title. To enable the shared underground parking access for future redevelopment of the adjacent site. So eleven forty-nine and eleven fifty-five. For clarity, the access easement would have been negotiated between the Dakota developer at that time. And the building owners of eleven forty-nine, in addition to the district.
Okay, so that was voluntarily entered into by the developer of the Dakota. At the time, not the current strata. Thank you.
Did you uh want to speak to that?
I can add more detail if you like. So in, in nineteen ninety-nine, that was negotiated, that easement. The developer of the Dakota residences is Adara. And we know the owner at the time of eleven forty-nine Lynn Valley who negotiated that agreement. So basically, the mayor at the time, it was at the DNB's mayor at the time, uh, his impetus. That Adara Grant easement for a future potential development. And so it was negotiated between the owners of eleven fifty-five and eleven forty-nine in nineteen ninety-nine and Adara Development. So it was put on title, it runs with the title of both properties. And so anybody who bought at the Dakota residences, their lawyer or notary would have advised them, these are the easements and conditions on title. Should have advised them, and when they bought the residences, they would have been advised properly, I assume. And would know what limitations were on title. And any subsequent buyers would also have been advised by their lawyer, lawyer or notary as to what was on title, the easement has always been there.
Thank you. Back to staff.
Great, next up we have, what about maintaining the hydrology for the significant stands at the Dakota?
Yeah, I'm going to answer this question, so um, understanding that there are a lot of long-time residents in the audience and in, in council. My understanding is that when Dakota would develop, uh, all the on-site trees were removed from that site. So what we see today currently are the boulevard trees along the Lynn Valley, as well as the. Uh, along the unopened lane at the back of the development, uh, adjacent to the chateau. So the boulevard trees are not related to these developments, so nothing will change, uh, nothing will, no change will come to them. The rear lane at this point is not proposed to be opened. And so even in the future, it is proposed to be opened by the district. Uh, those trees in there would be removed and uh trees will be replanted elsewhere. Thanks.
So is the project required to contribute to parkland? And if so, how much is required and how much is proposed?
Yeah, thank you, I'm also happy to do this question. Um, so as correctly pointed out by one of the speakers, parkland requirement. Is levied, is based on certain size per thousand population. So first of all, no, this individual application is not required to allocate land for park. Uh, through DCC contribution though, which this project will be required to pay. Uh, should proceed, a portion of that money will assist with parkland acquisition on a neighborhood basis. And then further, I will say for large development sites such as the Mountain Village. Uh, there is a possibility of dedicating a piece of land as park through the rezoning. Uh, which I believe is the vision of the Lynn Valley Plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next question, can staff comment about applicants' claim that there has only been marginal number. Uh, to rental units or of rental units built in Lynn Valley Town Center? Is this true? So staff can comment on the data as presented in our presentation that demonstrated. There is a significant shortage of rentals in Lynn Valley Town Center, so they're disproportionately low in comparison. Uh, to all the other town centers. And then if you look at it in comparison to ownership as well, so yes. There have only been marginal numbers since two thousand and eleven, upon adoption of the OCP, um, as per the data. Approximately forty-two market rental have been built in the Lynn Valley Town Center. Next question we have, can staff go into further detail about our assessment of the value uplift from the old zoning to the new? It beggars belief that this building will not be a significant increase in value versus the pre-zoning value. Are we measuring land lift from single family to res six, or is it measured from res five to res six?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, so just to clarify our CAC policy and how land lift is calculated. And how performer analysis is conducted, the performer specifically looking at existing zone land value. So it's RS three zone land value, uh, up to the two point eight eight FSR development that the applicant is proposing. So it's not based on RES five or RES six. So this, the proposal is falling between the RES five and RES six um, then. density. And I will say that the concept is difficult to understand, which is when there is no land lift, no land increase as a result of rezoning, it does not mean this project is not financially viable. What this means is that the factor in the the cost of constructing the building and then the off-site requirement, as well as this long-term revenue of rent, you know, backdated to today, that this particular project does not generate a land lift. But it is a profitable because in the development performer, we do factor in 50% of developer profit. So so just wanted to clarify that.
Second part to that question.
So we just have some follow-up questions. The hydrology question was not answered.
So there was a second part to the last question. It said, is uplift value net of construction costs as implied by the applicant?
Sorry, is the I think I may I may miss that question. So is the uplift, but this is the question, sorry, is uplift value net of the construction cost as implied by the applicant? So yes, so the uplift value, which is this land value increase is is the net result of considering all the costs, the soft costs, hard costs, including construction costs, as well as the off-site servicing requirement cost. And then factor in the long-term revenue of a rental project dated back to today. That is basically whether there is any additional value generated. See, so it's if there is additional value generated from the cost and then from the revenue. So there is more revenue and less cost than there is a positive land value generation. But in this case, there isn't. And then just to clarify, this is not to say that the project is not viable. It is the developer is building a rental project that will produce the developer a long-term revenue stream. And is not as profitable as a Strata development, because Strata development, you have capitalized, but naturalized future owner wanting to do the down payment, wanting to get into the development as an investment. And developer can actually sell those unit and get out of the development. So this is a completely different different financial scheme. I just wanted to be clear.
Follow then that any rental projects are not going to provide any land lift? Is that it?
Yeah, it's a really good question. It's really depends. I would say the CAC policy and then performer evaluation is a pretty standard across all the local munis, the lower mainland munis. And then it's looking at a project viability at a point in time. And it's very sensitive to market and both the land market as as well as our financial market, you know, interest rate and labor market, you know, in in terms of crews. And so couple of years ago, council have approved some rental project in the Lynn Creek area. And at that time, that was a completely different financial picture than today. And so what the CAC policy is asking is that we will ask for public benefit. And then also taking into the consideration of a particular project at a particular time.
If I could, another follow-up.
If, yes.
Right, it's just, it is very hard to understand. And and the reason I'm pressing it is because we're not getting any money into the Affordable Housing Fund out of this project because of the lack of land lift. And that's my concern about it. So I just really do not understand how land values are currently at all-time highs in the district. And so those two houses that they bought, no?
Sorry, someone raised their hand in the back. I will get back to the public once I've finished the council questions, but in the meantime, we'll listen to Council Pope's question.
Well, is that possible if this land is going to be rezoned so that there can be 66 units on it from two single-family homes and that the value of the land isn't increased? It just doesn't add up.
I I understand. I okay, so first of all, I will say that the land value, the figure that goes into the performer evaluation is the current zone value. It is not how the BCS assessment is trading, is not how much the market is buying. Usually, market is buying more than the zone value. So when we're saying, looking at performer evaluation or already input a lower value as the pre-zone value. But I wanted to separate the two concept of land value is whether there is the so-called windfall for developer as a result of the rezoning is a completely different concept than the project viability and whether you have a as I said, a rental is looking at a long-term investment stream. It is still viable, yet, you know, after after you factor in the cost, the contribution to the local community in terms of the pipe in the ground, in terms of the dedication along the the road, the tree planting, the public art, the DCCs and the you know, I couldn't think about any other cause at this point. But when you factor all those in and then as well as their development costs, in reality is that they will probably break even if you amortizes over the entire lifespan of the building.
I'll accept that as the response. I do think that premium units are probably going to fetch four to four and a half dollars per square foot. And it would seem to me that that should be producing enough revenue over the life of the building. I understand the comment from the applicant that on day one, maybe it's market, but because it has to comply with provincial policies going forward, it's going to become less tied to market as the life of the building goes on. That's fair. I heard that point, but it it does seem to me at premium market rates, there should be, it should be enough to produce some affordable component back to the municipality. But that's probably a bigger debate on our CAC policy and how it's interpreted. And so not subject of the public hearing. We're going to come back to you in just a minute. The there was a comment from council that they wanted additional information on the hydrology. I think specifically what we have in mind is we have had neighborhoods where new developments have gone in and has changed the hydrology of the neighboring properties. And so can you give us details about how you anticipate this will affect the neighboring properties?
Yeah, I I think, as you know, that we do have a very, very good gold standard stormwater management, groundwater, stormwater management plan post-construction. So the post-construction flow would be exactly the same as the pre-existing construction flow. And then what is this referring to? Is that during the construction phase, there is a dewatering process that need to occur to allow the full tanking of the foundation to go in, like the basement to go in. I think this is an issue that staff is aware of, and we have raised that with the applicant that if there are any off-site trees in the surrounding area, that it is applicant's responsibility, their aborist responsibility to, and then their QE, to be able to monitor the health of those trees and to be able to like, you know, water those trees and keep make sure that they're healthy. So.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to return back to councillor, yes.
Sorry, I just I I understand Ms. Zhang's response, but I still have concerns about the long-term viability of the trees, especially the the trees that surround the Dakota. And we quite frankly, don't know the future of the access of that lane, whether those trees ultimately will be removed or not. But we have had a recent experience in one of our parks. And there may be potential impacts by tanking on an adjacent development. So I I think we just need to understand as we hard surface these communities more, what is happening to the water and the storm flow?
Well, and I appreciate your comment, Councilman Muir. I think probably for the purposes of public hearing at this late stage, the question is, does it comply with our requirements or not? And then I think we have to have broader discussions about what our expectations are in protecting neighboring properties. But the question at this late stage in a public hearing is, does it comply?
I I agree, but I'm just raising that as a flag that we do need to discuss it.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to return back to the public. Would anybody like to address the hearing for a first, second or third time? Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to
Just restate your name. I think I've got it here. Russell, there you go. Thank you.
Let me just bring this up again. Yeah, it's not necessarily easy to understand. But for councillor Pope, this is, that's all right. So this is my attempt to kind of demonstrate. Yeah, why it is that here we have a site, this is a Coriolis analysis from Vancouver, city of Vancouver. Here we have a site with three detached houses on it. This is the value of the land is the blue per buildable square foot. And then this is the value with a six-story rental. So the total height of this rectangle is the value of the six-story rental building. Yeah, it might have 100 units in it. And the this value, the height of this, total height of this rectangle is determined by what is the value of market rents projected into the future. And then you have to subtract. Okay, well, these are the hard costs. So labor and materials, that's shown in red. All other costs, including financing costs, soft costs, development charges, CACs and so on, are also subtracted. And yeah, this gap here is the land lift that's left over. And again, this is for a project in the city of Vancouver. Rents here are going to be different. Costs may be different. But generally speaking, if you have a six-story rental building, after you subtract all the costs, both the hard costs and the soft costs, there really isn't that much left over. Comparing Strata projects to rental projects, my understanding is the rough difference is that people are willing to pay about maybe 50% more for a Strata unit compared to a rental unit. So it does look a little bit higher for Strata versus purpose-built rental. I think there was also a question about, well, how high would you have to go to include non-market? There's another diagram from the city of Vancouver showing if you've got an 18-story concrete purpose-built rental building with like all market, if you want to include 20% non-market, you have to go to 35 stories. And I guess they weren't willing to do that for the Broadway Plan. So they actually said, oh, we're going to go to like 20, 25 stories. So what that means is rents have to rise further before these projects will actually be viable. But anyway, so coming back to it, the OCP contemplates like five stories, six stories, I think, like even 12 stories would, you know, probably not be acceptable to people. So I I hope this helps to illustrate, like, it is counterintuitive.
I do appreciate you providing additional information. And I will just say generally, though, unfortunately, the municipal process is a little backwards in this regard in that we, when we do a town center planning exercise, we say we want to be able to extract about $50 million in benefit for affordable housing, parks, rec center spaces, for housing for persons with disabilities. And so then we set that amount and then we go to try to collect it from the development that occurs. If all the developments are converting to purpose-built rental, we can't deliver on those other things we've committed to the community. So I I I really appreciate you laying it out this way, just to say the municipal process is probably a little backwards in that regard, but our goal is to provide a public benefit. And if all of the developments are coming forward, not funneling that money back in, we have a challenge with what we've committed to.
Yeah, I guess the trade-off is like you do get a lot of rental housing, which is good. But it's true that the amenities and things like non-market housing are, is difficult to find funding for.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
No problem.
Anybody else like to address the hearing for a first, second or third time? Oh, I believe Corey Cost is joining us virtually for second time speaking. Go ahead, Corey.
Yes, good evening, Your Worship. Well, surprising remarks about the DCCs providing for the Parkland. I'm sorry, but I like to do the math on the situation. The DCC total was $632,615 total, all aspects of the DCC. No doubt. This only would involve a very small fraction of this DCC as actually belonging to Parkland. But at $4 million an acre, and this this unit requires about an acre of land, $4 million should be contributed to the DCCs. Not a small fraction of $632,000. So that's my comment. The monies provided will only provide a very small fraction of the Parkland monies that are obliged to be paid through the DCCs. This small amount of 120 square meters contribution of some sidewalk or a little is peanuts compared to what is really supposed to take place. So I just want to reiterate, again, we continue to cannibalize our existing Parkland for new development. Thank you.
Your comments, Corey Cost. Is there anyone else wishing to address this hearing for a first, second or third time? Mr. Kraber, welcome for your third time. I'll just ask that you not repeat yourself from your first two times up.
Fair enough. Your worship members of council, one thing, I have one question, the one question only, and I do not need an answer tonight, although I expect when this comes to public, when this comes to second and third reading, that it will be answered. Gillian Cost raised the point earlier in her presentation tonight about assurances that a permanent covenant will be put in place preventing the proponent or any subsequent purchasers of the property to convert this from rental housing into Strata. And I would like to hear from, I would like to hear when this next comes to council that that document either has already been executed or is in process. That's it.
Let me just get a clarity on that. So then cut the section well, 292 covenant, that would be acquired between third reading and adoption. Is that correct?
So the section 219 covenant, I'm just thinking, I think it would be registered prior to adoption of the bylaw.
So it would be a requirement of the process and it would be entered into prior to the adoption of the bylaw. Thank you. Okay, the next speaker that I have is joining us virtually, Kelsey Smart for a second time. Kelsey Smart, can you hear me?
And, and, hi.
Welcome. Go ahead.
I appreciate the question being addressed about the easement. So thank you for clarifying that in 1999, the developer, Adara, along with 1155 and 1149 Lynn Valley Road agreed to the easement as an owner in the Dakota. Darn, yes, of course, you made the point. Of course, we would have signed to it. We would have been informed of it. I don't think any of the owners here were aware of that, but that's, you know, prior informed consent, whatever onus is on us. Understood. So easement or not, and I do understand that there is legally an easement, prior informed consent or not, so every owner, it's their responsibility to know about that. It is not safe. The width of the driveway, there are a lot more SUVs on the road now than there were in 1999. The driveway is not safe for, like, right now, we have 60 units of people and their visitors going back and forth on the driveway. It's very busy. It gets clogged. You increase that density, that volume, that traffic on there. That's, it's not going to be safe. It's going to cause backup on Lynn Valley roads. So I would just like that noted. And I don't know if you legally have to speak to this or not. Maybe it's answered by the fact that the Dakota owners own the driveway. I guess we will be responsible for all maintenance and repairs of the driveway. And there's an easement, so every owner here is apparently responsible for that. And none of us were aware, whatever, our problem, but the driveway is not the driveway is not safe to accommodate additional traffic like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelsey Smart. Okay. Anybody else like to address this hearing for a first, second or third time? I see Ben Patton for a second time.
Howdy. Um, just want to address a couple of different comments here, um, only in an effort to provide some information. Um, just so everyone is aware, I happen to be a parks caring danger tree assessor. Uh, it is the worksafe BC standard for tree risk assessment in this province. Um, so I just do have the ability to say there are one or two trees just on the neighboring side for Dakota that could be at potential risk for the de-watering, predominantly being the cedar that's closest to adjacent. Definitely manageable, definitely manageable. Uh, cedars like wet feet, but they also like draining water. So in theory, if you're adding a little bit more water to an already draining system, that's not going to be nearly as much of an impact as one might think. It just definitely does need to make sure that there is some water and, you know, engaged in that. So consistent monitoring, which like every contracted arborist is supposed to be doing, you know, the typical process. Beyond that, for the hydrology of the site, uh, the de-watering shouldn't be that much of an adverse reaction for the rest of the site, specifically on Dakota. Uh, we're thinking about on the lane, uh, the tulip trees will definitely need to be watered. But again, these are some things that are, you know, uh, the, the common process when it comes to, uh, construction related to tree management. So I just wanted to say on that, but also I would like to say, knowing the kind of stubborn attitude that I have when it comes to trying to protect trees, just as much as the salvage, I'll leave that over on one side. When it comes to protecting trees, uh, the number of trees that are coming down on the property right now, um, the majority of them are in, I would argue, significantly poor health. Uh, just was there the other day. There are some dangerous trees on site as we speak right now. Uh, some of them are a bit larger. Some of them are, some of the large ones were, are in a moderate vigorous state, as one might say. So in other words, it's moderately healthy. That being said, any of, any development on this property, the critical root zone, because of those trees having such a large root zone, that will be impacted. So that's one of the reasons why retirement for those large trees upon the, the Lynn Valley corridor is definitely going to be difficult. The tulip trees on the laneway, which again are stunning district-owned trees, those are well without, uh, outside of what's going to be removed or, um, uh, in the arborist report, they're asked to be retained and, um, that's, you know, district-owned land. So I don't think that's going to be, uh, you know, hard sell to keep those beautiful trees. That being said, um, it is just looking towards how many different trees are coming off the property. About half of them are in like need to come down tomorrow level of kind of consideration. So that's where, uh, it does, it's not just an entirely healthy stand with perfect specimen trees there. It is something to take in mind. That being said, there are some beautiful trees that unfortunately do have to go. Uh, it's one of the reasons why I've been advocating for about two years now to try to protect the urban tree canopy by reducing the TBH or the diameter at breast height, which is monitored for a private, uh, private tree ownership on private land. So hopefully we can get there soon and, you know, kind of helps protect everybody when they're talking about some of the, the tree canopy when we're trying to protect them. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Just gonna check, I, I will come back to council for questions in just a moment, but, uh, just want to check and see, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first, second or third time? Gillian Const, welcome, come on up.
I have just a very quick question. Thank you again, Mayor Council. Um, so this will be my first time because now I'm speaking as Gillian, not on behalf of LBCA. So I don't know whether I took this the wrong way, but I think it's unhelpful to consider the number of rentals we have in Lynn Valley compared to the other town centers. Because Lynn Creek and Lions Gate are planned town centers. But it's important to remember that Lynn Valley was an existing community that was designated as a town center. So it's going to be that much harder to bring us up to what the other town centers have. So maybe I took it the wrong way, but I think it's important to remember that. Also important to remember how many rentals have been lost in Lynn Valley in the last few years. Quite a lot. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. As Gillian Const, Citizen of the Year of Lynn Valley for 2023, actually, there you go. Not to embarrass, but, uh, to honor. Um, okay. Would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first, second or third time? Okay, so I'm going to just circle back to council for questions. I think councillor Muir, you had a follow-up question, I believe it was about the drainage hydrology issue or the tree retention?
No, I've, I think I've, um, I, I, I've heard the response and I think we have to have a discussion in the future about stormwater and how we're protecting these areas around these redevelopments. But I'm just wondering what the options are to reconsider the access on the right of way with this driveway. I've got some significant concerns about the access. And so what I, I just want to understand before this hearing's closed and we go back, what staff needs from us now if we were to ask for an alternative?
Yeah, and I think that aligns with the question raised by another member of council. So if we have further information from staff and what are you able to provide this evening versus uh, at, at, before it's, this matter is considered for second and third?
Yeah, maybe I'll just first provide that clarification. And so, so basically this is a three-sided site. And then it's, the site is fronting Lynn Valley and then has a easily a lane that shared between the site and then the now closed Black Bear pub site. And then what I will call a rear lane that is now open at this point. And so we have looked at the access, it got come from some point, right? Whether it's from Lynn Valley or from this easily lane or from the unopened lane. So that easier lane is essentially a service lane for the Safeway site. Yes, let's, let's.
Tash, are we able to get the slide of the layout back up on the screen? Thank you.
Cause I'm seeing like the lane greenway, that's what it's called across the south side. And then I'm not sure what we're calling it on the town center side.
Mass is disappeared.
Page five on.
I know. Yeah, no, it seems to be frozen.
Okay. Do we have the, do we have the application package in front of you?
Yeah, it's, so.
Just the, the context, um, plan, which is.
I could share it if, do you want me to?
Yeah.
I'm finding page five is the most, is the one that shows the driveway access the best.
You could.
That one is it doesn't show that where the driveway is. Which is, can you?
Oh, like, so this is the, yeah, the shared lane, the driveway is, I believe in here.
When, yeah.
Is it the Dakotas?
It's just not very clear. It's not as clear as page five on the staff presentation.
All right, let me see if I can.
Yeah, it's not, that's the applicant's presentation. Russell, we're, we're actually going from the staff report, I think.
All right, sorry. Yes.
Thanks for trying to be helpful again.
Your USB was in. Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
That makes sense. So slide. The cycle. There we go.
Can you make it a full screen? Thank you. Okay, good. Are you able to point on that screen at all? The technology.
Yep.
Upstate. I don't really see any. Did you, did you?
Can you see the mouse? I know it's, it's right here.
So this lane currently is only serving the Safeway as a loading and service lane and then is, uh, the loading trucks come from East 27th and then go through the Safeway site at the back and then exit from this lane.
So does Safeway own that?
The district actually owns it, but we have an easement with Safeway to guaranteed uninterrupted loading for that grocery store.
So is that something that can be negotiated?
So, so I do believe the applicant have negotiated with, they tried to negotiate with Snowcat. But, um, but that hasn't been very successful. And, uh, you know, there's other challenges related to that as well, because I think I'm going to leave this to the applicant to answer, because when I look at the section plan that there is the grading of where your underground parquet is, does not match up with the lane elevation. So that creates a big design challenges for, as far as I can see. So, um, and then so the rear lane, of course, that is a future greenway and currently unopened. And then we don't intend to open it. So as part of this project, they're only going to refurbish that to a point. You know, there's cyclists can use it and, uh, potentially can use it exiting from this development or from the south can use it, but beyond the frontage of the site, that lane needs to be closed. And because it's.
Why, why does that name lean need to be called? Why couldn't that be considered as an alternative?
So I am talking about the back lane.
Yes.
At the, at the, so this is the short frontage of this back lane. So because is, is not really open at this point, and then it feeds into that service lane, which is currently not really open to anybody, but, um, just a vehicle.
But our question is why? That's what we're seeing clarification on. Why couldn't it come out that way to this roadway?
To the road, to the, the, uh, the, an open lane at the back?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, so I, I think to do, because it's feeding into the service lane and the servicing currently is not really open. So that really has, you know, because it's not two-way traffic, so it cannot really go in and out and serve this particular development. It is possible, absolutely possible. I think maybe in the ideal sequence, when the Safeway site redevelops the lane fully open and become a two-way traffic and then, you know, that an openly opens, then it is possible. But at this point, there is a great challenge, the, you know, the topology, topography challenge. And then there is this, uh, particular easement with Safeway that is preventing the lane access.
Mayor Little, I think the question, um, and I, I appreciate the comments from councillor Pope and councillor Hanson. I, I feel like we're kind of stuck on these potential developments that planning has already sort of decided how this area is going to work. I think council's trying to find a way to address the issues we have. And I'd really like some alternatives to be brought back to council. So we can understand what our options are. I don't understand the issue of topography. And, um, we have many developments that have, um, single lane access off the Parkway and Mount Seymour. By the United Church, we have single lane accesses into the rear of developments down lanes. So I'm not sure why all of a sudden it's a problem here. If this is our land and we have a right of way, we should be able to have an access into this site. I don't want to see any trees taken down, but I also don't want this driveway impeding an existing development and exiting out onto Lynn Valley Road, good heavens. I thought we were trying to get away from all of that. This seems in, in contrast to what we're doing in the Seymour. So I don't know why the practice is allowed in Lynn Valley.
I'm trying to figure out, uh, council, how to advise council on what, on moving forward on this specific aspect. So the challenge is the proposal that's come before us has, uh, the reuse of an existing lane without any new lane being created as a part of its proposal. And council is now talking about, musing about adding a new ramp in a new location onto other land that already has obligations on it. We're, we're really complicating the matter beyond what we're being asked to do by the developer in this case. Um, and so I'm, I'm at a loss as to say whether this is actually sticking to the content of the application that's before us, or whether this is us verging into a broader land disuse discussion on neighboring properties. I can tell you just on my own personal comments. I would be very frustrated if I was Boza or Crombie Reit hearing that there's a public hearing that is hinging on whether or not I now have to provide access to a property, uh, in partnership with the district or some other, um, proposal like that. The application before us, up for our consideration, it has the support of the ADP, has the support of our staff up to, to this point, has contemplated the use of the ramp that is already there. And I think that at this stage, we're better off to vote on that application when it comes back for second and third. Or at second and third, if you're not satisfied with it, we can choose to not grant it second and third reading and then send it for alternatives. But I'm not doing that in the middle of the public here. So at this point, I prefer to continue on with the public hearing. The response we've had from staff is, is adequate. It covers the issues that we've raised pertaining to this application. When it gets to second and third reading, it's entirely up to you to decide whether you're satisfied with the project or whether you want to refer the matter back for further consideration at the time. I would much rather keep the sanctity of the public hearing by continuing on this evening and exhausting the public speakers and moving forward. Are there any other clarifying questions from council? Before I go back to the public to formally exhaust the public speaking list. Hearing none. I'm going to move now back to the public. And so this is where it gets a little bit, uh, a little bit of a process. I have to exhaust the public speaking list. And so this is going to sound a little old schooly. For a first time, would anybody else like to address the, the public hearing a first, second or third time? For a second time, would anybody else like to address this public hearing for a first, second or third time? For a third and final time, would anybody else like to address this public hearing for a first, second or third time? Hearing none. Adam Kirk, I believe we've exhausted the public input portion of this. Except, uh, I now look to council for a motion. Council, councillor Hanson, you have a motion?
I, with the public hearings closed and this matter, we've referred, uh, to another, a date for second and third reading.
I'll second that motion. Prepare to call a question on that motion. All in favor? Contrary minded. Motion is carried. So what that means is that we've now closed the public hearing. And so council has the information that they need to make the decision on the matter uh, or to make a different recommendation. And it means that we actually can't really receive any new additional information from the public, um, from this point forward. We can ask clarifying questions from staff if, if information was a part of the presentation, but we're not allowed to seek new information in the process. What we've heard so far is what we make the decision based on. Uh, at this time, I'm going to ask the clerk, do you have a date in mind for return to second and third reading, please?
Thank you, your worship. Tentatively, we are scheduling for October 21st, however, uh, that will require confirmation from planning staff after the hearing.
Our intent is to put it on the evening of the 21st. Uh, you'll have to watch the agendas as they get published in the week leading up to it to verify whether it's going to hit that night. But, uh, I want to say on behalf of council, thank you all very much for participating in the public hearing. Thank you to the staff for preparing the reports for our consideration this evening. Everybody, have a great night. Good night.